Good evening, everybody. Welcome to September 24th meeting of the Dover School Committee. My name is Jeff Cassidy and I call this meeting to order at 6:30 on the dot. We're pleased to hold this in open meeting in Dover Sherborne Middle School Library. This evening, we're also live streaming with the SCTV. Please note that this meeting is being recorded. First on our agenda this evening is community comments. Do we have any community comments?
Three and one.
Okay, no community comments from here either. So moving on to the next agenda item, we have superintendent comments.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'll be brief because I gave an extensive overview just a little while ago, but I would like to start by thanking Dr. Reineman and Mr. Caron for successful opening to the school year and of course, all of our educators and staff. It's very exciting, lots of positive spirit and energy in Chickering School. I've had the opportunity to be there a few times. I've seen the kids reading in the lobby on their mats. We visited lots of math classrooms yesterday, so I got to see the new curriculum in action, which was great. Denny will talk more about that. We'll be going to an assembly, the two of us, later in October, just to say hello to the students and remind them who we are and that we visit classes and that we're trying to track their learning K to 12 as the bigger 30,000-foot view. And Open House is Thursday night and I will see you and many of your peers there. Looking forward to that. And a reminder that at 5:30, there'll be an opportunity for parents to come early to learn more about the math curriculum launch and how that's going and what it entails. So without further ado, I'm going to turn it over to Assistant Superintendent Conover to give you an update on curriculum.
All right, so just a quick teaching and learning update. So I did this not too long ago, twice in one night. All right. So first up is the math curriculum update. So we are off and running with our new math curriculum at the elementary school, Reveal. Our teachers have been preparing for this since really we decided that that was the curriculum that we were going to adopt. We had two professional development days over the summer with McGraw-Hill to get to know the curriculum and the online platform. We also gave teachers time over the summer, kind of paid days, to do some self-paced learning. So whether that was dropping into a webinar, looking through their teacher's editions, working with one of our math coaches, they had that time. Lots of teacher workshops and a lot of prep over the summer to get ready for the launch of the new curriculum. Our math coach at Chickering, Laura Halloran, has been doing a phenomenal job supporting teachers and has been everything from a teacher running in and saying like, "I'm missing these manipulatives, where can I find them?" To going in modeling lessons for teachers, working with the students, help them get used to the new math curriculum. So that has been a huge, huge help for getting this launched, just having such a fantastic math coach. And just having a math coach that is collaborating with their counterpart in Sherborne as well. So Lindsay Weiner had been doing all of it and now there's two people that can share ideas and collaborate with each other. So far, when we've been launching the math curriculum, the focus has been on creating a positive growth mindset relating to math for our students and fostering positive math identities. So if you have talked to students, their first unit was this unit called Math Is, which is all about exploring what are the possibilities of math, what are all the things that math can relate to, but also just focusing like, what is my own personal history on math? What are my feelings about math? To really set the stage for learning about math the rest of the year. So often, you can go into classrooms and even some of our youngest learners will say, "I'm just not good at math. Numbers are really, really hard for me." Some kids are really, really excited about math as in a fifth grade class and they're like, "When are we going to do algebra?" And I'm just like, "Not this year." But we really want to set the table for the rest of the school year to make sure that all students know that there's a place for them to learn math. There's a place for them to contribute, to share their learning and their understanding, and that's what that first unit did. So by now, most teachers are through that unit into their first kind of real math units and getting used to the lesson routine. One of the great things about our focus on adopting a new math program this year has been that we're devoting all of our time to this. So all of our early releases this year are about math. So our math coaches, Sherborne and one Dover, have been working really, really hard on playing professional development. We had our first one last week during our early release. The focus on that was about math talks and how our students are talking about math in their classroom as well as number routines. I think that one of the nice things too is that there's been this feeling amongst the teachers and the staff in the building that we're all in this together. So we're going to hit bumps along the way, but we're all here to support each other. We're all here to troubleshoot with each other. I know that was hard for some of our pilot teachers. They felt like they were on an island. So it's nice to have that everybody is working together. Our special educators, our educational assistants were part of this professional development last week. So we feel like we're all kind of rowing in the same direction, which is good. And as Superintendent McCoy said, next week or this week for Open House, there will be an opportunity for parents to come, parents and caregivers to come to an informational session to get to know the curriculum more, to think about ways that they can support students at home, types of questions that they might be hearing their students bring up. For parents and caregivers that can't attend that, we'll be recording that and then we'll share out that recording via Parent Square as well. A plug for Parent Square to make sure that you're getting all of your notifications for Parent Square. So just some photos and things. So our math curriculum PD, one of the things that Laura Halloran, our math coach, did last week was she differentiated the professional development for teachers. So there was a lot of opportunity for choice in teachers to pick various areas that they wanted to explore more. We've been talking a lot about math talks and you might ask students about number talks and the hand signals that they're using. So you can see them up there. So there's this kind of fist that you hold here that represents "I'm thinking." If you have an answer or you have a strategy, you can put a thumbs up. If you have more than one strategy, you can kind of point your finger. And then a lot of our students already do this for "I agree." It's nice for our teachers because when they pose a problem, there's not like a million hands trying to get the teacher's attention. And for some of our students that might not be confident in an answer or might be taking some more time to process, you know, this is kind of closer to the body rather than seeing everybody next to you with their hand up, knowing that they know the answer. So again, that goes and speaks to this idea of trying to build positive math identities for all of our students. We've been getting into our new number routines, which you can see some examples of up here. And I also just wanted to share some pieces of a math lesson with you all. So one of the things that, you know, we were really drawn to with the curriculum was this segment called Be Curious. This is kind of the hook into the lesson and an opportunity to get all voices into the lesson. So you'll often see a problem like this that starts a math lesson. In this one, it says, "Which one doesn't belong?" The great thing about these is that there's never any right or wrong answer to it, but it's an invitation for all students regardless of their abilities to be able to share their thinking and be able to explain their thinking. So sometimes these are just done where students share out their answers. We've seen teachers who have had students go to different corners of the room to show their answers and their thinking. We've had a teacher say like, "Oh, you might have chosen the one on the top right. If you didn't choose that one, what might somebody who chose that one use to explain their thinking?" So getting students to kind of think from different perspectives. This is another example of a Be Curious. So which of these doesn't belong? So when I saw this problem, my initial reaction was that the dimes were the ones that didn't belong because that equals 50 cents. But then I started hearing other people's thinking and a lot of people chose the pennies because they said very simply they're a different color. Some people chose the quarter and said it's the only one that has one singular coin there. So it was really interesting. It's a way to see all the different ways that people think and it's a way that all of our students can be part of this initial math conversation. Another piece is number routines. So this is to build fluency and numeracy skills with our students. So this is an example of one of the number routines. You can see here, it says there are three red blocks, eight blue blocks, and eight green blocks left in the bin. How many blocks are left in the bin? Again, when I saw this problem, I just did 3 plus 8 plus 8. And I just said, "3 plus 8 is 11, and 11 plus 8 is 19." That's how I got it. And when I was in the classroom, a student actually said, "So what I did is I took the eights and I broke them into a 5 and a 3 and a 5 and a 3. And I know that 5 plus 5 is 10. And then I was left with three 3s and I add them up." And that's how they got to their answer. And it was, it's not something I would have ever thought about, but it was just another pathway to get to the same answer. And that's one of the purposes of these number routines is to get students to hear from each other that there are different ways and strategies that you can go to solve a problem and to arrive at the same answer. So it's been fun getting into the classrooms and seeing the students kind of stretching their thinking and saying, "Oh, I never would have thought it like, thought about it like that." Or some students have used number lines, some have said like, "Oh, I can use these blocks to show my thinking." So that's been a nice part of the math that we've seen so far. So throughout this year, we're going to be thinking about how are we doing with the program? So these are some of the metrics we'll be using to monitor our progress and how things are going with this new math program. So for this year, we've, first time giving out a universal math screener to see an initial pass at where we might be seeing some gaps in student learning and student skills in math. We're continuing to use iXL as a math diagnostic at various times throughout the year to kind of take a dipstick for where students might need to get some additional skills on. We're using a new program this year called Math Fact Lab, which is also going to be another diagnostic test to help us make better decisions about students and where they might need support in a win block or might need some additional support or guidance from their teacher. As I mentioned, we're thinking about math identities. So we're going to be surveying our students and thinking about, "How did you feel about math at the beginning of the year and how do you feel about math at the end of the year?" Our teachers are going to be giving formative and some of the assessments, so exit tickets, little quizzes and assessments here and there. We'll be tracking our Tier 2 and Tier 3 interventions to see if this new math program is having any impact on our Tier 2 and Tier 3 interventions. Obviously, we've already been doing a lot of observations and walkthroughs in classrooms to see how things are going. And we'll be continuing to gather feedback from teachers throughout the year at different staff meetings, PLC meetings, and get some feedback. And hopefully sometime in around like late spring, we'll be able to take all these things and start to think about, "What does this mean for next year? Are there tweaks we need to make in the curriculum? What has worked really well this year? What are some things that we might need to change for next year?" So I just wanted to show kind of these are the different factors that are going to play a role in how we assess how the program is doing. The other quick update I wanted to give you was on ELA. So last spring, we had our literacy coaches come in and give you an update on all the things that we're doing in the district to create a really comprehensive literacy program for our students. In it, I mentioned that we're going to be embarking upon a elementary ELA curriculum review. So I just wanted to lay out what that's going to look like because it's going to start this year. We followed Desi's steps for a curriculum review process. So the first segment of that is called Learn and Prepare, then Investigate and Select, Launch, and the final part Implement and Monitor. So usually, this is around a five to six-year cycle. So in this year, we're just in year one of that. And it's going to be guided by these two questions up here. The first one is, "What are the things that we value in an ELA curriculum for an elementary school? And what does the research suggest are the best practices for ELA instruction in an ELA curriculum?" So we're going to be surveying teachers and staff and students to get answers to these questions. And in the winter, you'll see something going out to parents and caregivers on Parent Square, asking for feedback from community members about what do they think are important parts of an elementary ELA curriculum. So we'll take all that information and we'll launch into the next phase of this, which will start in the summer, which will be answering this question. So based upon what we have said we value in an ELA curriculum, what we've seen with current research, what the Massachusetts Frameworks say, and the data that we have at our fingertips from MCAS scores, from our diagnostic tests, is our current curriculum aligning with all of these things? And if the answer is yes, then we'll keep our current curriculum and make any adjustments that might need to be made. If the answer is no, then we'll go into a next phase of this, which will be beginning to research other curriculum programs and to see whether or not, you know, we need to start piloting new programs. So that's kind of what we're looking at years one and two. And then from there, we'll see kind of where the rest of the journey takes us. So happy to answer any questions or comments with our little teaching and learning update.
I have two questions, if that's okay. This looks great, by the way. This is really exciting. For the metrics, which of those metrics, besides the MCAS scores, which seem like the obvious, are the, are going to be shared back with parents, if any? Are these more internal tracking metrics or are they going to become public? Or public either at like the global level or at like the individual family level?
That's a great question. I think that this year, we're starting to think about how we're sharing information with parents and caregivers. I know that we're going to be making sure that we're sharing results from DIBELS, which is an ELA, with parents at parent and caregiver conferences that are coming up. And certainly, any student that is going into a Tier 2 or Tier 3 intervention, there's communication that goes home that explains why they might be getting the services in a Tier 2 or Tier 3 intervention. But in terms of our iXL scores or our Math Fact Lab, I think that's something that probably we need to have some further discussion upon at the building leader level and talking to math coaches and to teachers. Especially in Math Fact Lab, this is our first time through it. So I think teachers are still trying to figure out exactly what it's going to show and what that data is going to point to. But I certainly think that those are conversations we could be having about ways that we can communicate these results with parents and caregivers.
And my second question was around the win groups. Last year, I think, or even the year before, maybe, I'm trying to think of the years. There was an opportunity for kids that were strong in math to have like an accelerated win group around math. Is this program going to continue to facilitate that or are those that are stronger in math going to have like an opportunity within the curriculum to kind of get pushed ahead?
So you just started putting together win groups, so I'm going to let Dr. Reineman answer that.
Great question, Jesse. More likely that the math curriculum will allow for differentiation within the lessons rather than within the win group type is our expectation. We're not there yet.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, Denny. Thank you, Beth. So moving along, we have financial reports.
Good evening, everyone. In your packet, you have your accounts payable warrant report for the closeout of '24. So that's everything that we process against fiscal year '24 since you last met. And then on the backside, there's a long page of everything that we did this summer. And it basically gives you sort of the timeframe of when we paid certain bills. And then generically, it tells you the funds so that you can sort of see the different sources and the different sort of categories in your budget of where we process. And we send this over in detail like this to the town, just so you know, because it allows them to properly then post it to their general ledger. We really have two sets of books, so that's why it seems so long. We break everything up by their general account line item and that's how then they post it. So it definitely streamlines a lot even though it looks convoluted. And for anyone, as you know, you're always welcome to come to central office to look at the backup of this. And I think, Jesse, for continuing to-
Yes, I've been doing it. Trying to stay on it. I don't want to say how often they get.
Exactly. Every, every two weeks, although now it's been every week. We've got a lot to pay. But this is just because we, the school committee elected to have one vote, one signer. We share everything with the whole committee and that's sort of how we are allowed to do the one signer. You also have in your packet tonight sort of the final financial statement for fiscal year '24 as of June 30th. It's a slightly more positive by, say, maybe by about $60,000 outlook than what you saw in June. As you know, sort of our, our major difference in the budget this past fiscal year was in our out-of-district. We were $1 million over what we had budgeted. And throughout the year, we sort of explained to you sort of the causes for that. I mean, I'm projecting that we're going to sort of unfortunately be in the same position this year. And so you're probably going to see, when you see your first set of financials in October, probably some red numbers also in out-of-district. We're fortunate the way the town has us budget in that it assumes that we are going to receive zero amount of reimbursement for circuit breaker. And so the circuit breaker is there to sort of be the reserve for us when we go over budget. In a normal year, if we don't encounter out-of-district negative variances, that whole circuit breaker goes back to the town. And so if you sit in town meeting and talk about free cash, it goes into their free cash. So we are, we have seen a little bit of a blip in that process. This year, if you look at your financial statement, even though we received over $1.3 million in circuit breaker, we're only turning back to the town about $300,000. So that is the net of that. For the first time, actually, since I've been in this position, we're holding some money in our circuit breaker. We usually zero it out at June 30th. The most that we can have is whatever Dover, just the elementary side got from circuit breaker reimbursement, which is that around $97,000. So we are keeping that on hand to help additionally with any overages we have this year. And that's primarily because, I know this gets very complicated, but if you remember, we mentioned that we've got a supplemental reimbursement of like $275,000. That was almost like a prepayment versus additional money. So we're going to get a less amount of circuit breaker this year by that $275,000. So that 90 some thousand is sort of a safety net for us. So it's the first time we've sort of kept any circuit breaker, but I think given the circumstances, even more so, I'm glad we did that, knowing that we're seeing some negative variances in out-of-district. But in your in-district, we were like within $32,000. So we are almost right on. Again, we were, had variances. Some of them were explained. We talked about, we actually added some staff to special education that used to be contracted services. And we also, on top of that, added some FTEs for some of the related services due to the support, the current cohort of students needed. And so that's that large variance that you see of about $170,000. But the savings in down below for sped services, that's some of the outside contracted services that obviously had moved up to the payroll line item. So that helps offset that a little bit. We were also fortunate that we had a very favorable heating oil price. So then we had about a $50,000 savings in utilities. So there's things that help us and we try to manage our budget within salaries, manage within that expenditures, we manage within with that. And then out-of-district, we just sort of hope it all works as best we can. So I give you a little insight, I think I gave you a little bit of insight to fiscal year '25 that we are, are going to probably see a negative variance in out-of-district. If you recall, we've moved the Connections program over to Chickering. And so we are seeing just a little bit of an increase in related services again for moving those students over. That's a part of the budget that when we moved it from Pine Hill and Chickering, we did the staff members and the EAs, but we didn't drill it down to the related services. So there is additional pieces of FTEs that have moved over from Pine Hill to Chickering. So Pine Hill's seen some savings, Chickering's seen a little bit more of an expenditure, but that was minimal enough that we wanted to wait to see how it was all going to play out, get the staff in place. So you will see that impact when you see your October statements. But I think it's been, and Dr. Reineman can confirm, but it feels like it's been a smooth transition. We do have students from Pine Hill going over. And so hopefully, this is a program that is making a difference, I think, for the students at Chickering. So I think it was the right move and we will keep monitoring that and report back to you. But that is it for closing '24. Talk about '25 for one month before we show up in November and start planning '26.
Any questions? I just had a quick one done on the warrants. I saw a couple Esser fundings. Is this like the remainder of what's left? Because that's all expiring now, right?
Yes. So you had a little bit of Esser 3 left. In October, I'll do a grant report for you because we'll bring forward the approval of the new grants and I will close out the Esser grants. So yeah, we have, at all three districts, we have fully expended. The Esser 3 was the one that ends September 30th.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
So fortunate for us that we had already moved some of the staff onto the budget. You saw that like last year. So the last little bit of Esser, we used, we used a little bit for the additional math and a few things that we're adding on to close that out. So we will miss those funds. It definitely was a nice opportunity when things arose that we could, you know, utilize Esser money, but we will still be strategic with our other title and grant money that we have. But we'll do more, I'll do a closeout for the grants when we introduce the new grants for '24 in October. And then that sets you up well for your budget in November.
Thanks.
So I just wanted to point out that as you see in the summary of fiscal year '24, which is last year's budget, in terms of the in-district costs, which we budget for and can control, thanks to John's leadership, we were then within 0.4% of where we thought we'd be. So that's incredible. So thank you to you and to Dr. Reineman and everybody for really keeping an eye on numbers. For those of us who might not remember or who are new to the table, can you talk a little bit about how volatile special education is and why perhaps, you know, this might have been over budgeted?
Right. So especially with Dover, we, because of how generous the town is in our budget, we don't budget for potential placements or pending placements. We really only budget for the placements that we know that are valid because otherwise we would, our budget would be way too high. So when things come up that where we have, so we had six more placements last year than we had budgeted for. And we also had some placements that became mixed, um, due to changes in the nature of what the student needed, became much more expensive. So it was a mixture of new placements and changes in placement cost. So if I remember correctly, it was about $600,000 in new placements and about $400,000 in changes of placements. So you could have a student, just, you know, to put it in perspective, we have several students that are residential. So they, they are in school, we pay for 365 days. Those are running $350,000 to $400,000. So if you get someone who goes into a residential program, which does happen, you can see what that does. That is a big incremental cost. We also had one really unusually large case this past year that when, if you remember, we did your budget, we took some out because we thought that we were going to be able to age out that or graduate out that student. Over the summer, we learned we aren't. That's going to be a big, a big piece of why one more year, we're carrying the placement for this student that's in excess of, you know, several hundred thousand dollars. And then add on top of that are placements that are sort of unknown, so they come on, they're going to a placement, maybe it's 70, 80,000. The transportation is actually very expensive. Transportation can add another 40, $35,000 to $40,000 into that equation. The great thing now is, is that for the last several years, we're actually getting some reimbursement back from that transportation and we used to not get anything. And Dover's transportation has traditionally been around 400,000, which is more than our gen ed transportation. And we weren't getting any reimbursement on that. So the fact that we're getting some reimbursement on transportation is actually a huge benefit to what we're experiencing. But keep in mind, we are a small district. There's limited capabilities to keep every student in district. And so we've got to put the student where they are, with a cohort, and it can get the least restrictive education that's best for them. And so we're definitely having programs like Connections, our integrated preschool, those are keeping students in district, but there's only so much we can do with the size of our district. So we do see our students that go out are probably at the more intensive level, which then is also a higher cost placement. But we'll give you, you'll have a chart, you'll see where we sort of say they go to math, they go to other public schools, they go to our collaborative programs, they go to outstate programs, they go to residential or private schools. So we give you as much information as we can with keeping confidentiality for our families. But it is a, it's a large expense for small districts. And we're fortunate to have the circuit breaker, but there's still a big piece of it that we have to cover in our own budget. So I know it's complicated.
Thank you. No, I mean, that all makes sense. Thank you. I have a question related, and I feel like this question probably gets brought up every year, but just to ask it, particularly given that the program, the Connections programs now in Dover, have there been any sort of like planning discussions about possibilities to make in-district more optional for kids that are otherwise out of district? Like, is there any sort of feasibility or assessment or like things that have been done just to consider like, what are other options to reduce the cost and keep more kids in district?
We do. So, you know, we, we take the time and Kate McCarthy and her group does that, but we, you look at sort of the disabilities for the students and if we see a common, like, so we, with Connections, we saw a common cohort of students because you don't want to create a program if you don't have longevity for it because it's expensive to maintain the program, right?
Right.
And things that we started at the elementary, then we have to think about the movement up to 612 and being able to handle that. But we, I think that we have, we have many more special ed and they're not, they're not, I'm going to say they're support programs versus true programs. I'm going to say they're support programs versus true programs. But there are, the language base, for example, if you go back and look at history, we probably used to spend, send a lot of students from Dover to the Carroll School. But we picked that up in getting our teachers equipped to being able to do wisdom training and handling those students in district. And now we have a thread going up to the middle school and to the high school of a language based program. So we, we have had some success, but you've got to have a cohort of students, at least like two or three, to make that worthwhile, to sort of invest in that program and make it worthwhile for them too. They need to have peers.
That makes sense.
Right, so no, anytime we see a cohort of students that we think has longevity here, that we can educate here, we absolutely do that.
And that's the benefit of the collaboratives too, that we belong to the tech and the accept collaborative. So we're able to join with other public school districts and between our two students and their ten students, we can create a cohort that's reasonably priced. And then there's other larger school districts like Wellesley and Natick sometimes that have programs that we can send our students to for a lesser cost. So we try to do what's best for the kids.
Yeah, we've made huge inroads to collaborative, you know, technically when, when they're looking to place a student out, they look other public schools, right? Then the collaborative is the next level that they should look at. So you, you look, look at what's the most cost effective for us, but still meeting the needs of the student.
Makes sense.
Just a quick technical question. You said one of the students we thought was going to age out, domestic says changed the age.
No, actually, I reversed it and said we thought they were going to graduate out.
Oh, 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 okay.
And they changed the requirements.
Okay.
No, they haven't changed, it's still twenty two.
Okay.
On your birthday.
On your birthday.
Happy birthday.
Great, thank you. All right, next was discussion items, but I don't think we had any from, carried over from the summer. So moving on to action items, to Chicaring School Improvement Plan, second read.
Let's turn it over to Dr. Reindman.
Thank you. Thank you to Superintendent McCoy, Assistant Superintendent Conklin for coming over to get us lunch for the year. It's been very fun to have you traveling around the school with us and checking in on everyone as we get settled into the year. It's been a busy start as always, but things are running smoothly, buses are on time, classrooms are open. We are nearly fully staffed, which is sort of the theme for everything, I think, is how it's going to go. But we are, we are up and ready to go with, I think, four hundred and ninety six kiddos today. So we're excited. The school improvement plan is here, there's not many changes to it, the goals didn't change. I really like this format, by the way, if anyone's interested in my opinion, of giving the, the original plan in in June and then having the summer to work with Pine Hill and the other school leaders to really mesh out the plan and find things where we have in common so we can share resources and then giving you a final report here. So this has been very helpful. So if we can keep this, that would be great. Our first goal has not changed since the June presentation, the multi-tiered system of supports, MTSS. We are continuing to refine our ELA assessments, as Denny alluded to, and looking at our math assessments, I get that big old long list he had on the side, and how does that fit with interventions across the school? And then we are piloting Bridges, which is a math intervention curriculum that matches up very nicely with Reveal. So our interventionists are learning that program and looking at that. We're starting with the, some of the screening tools this week. It's been really interesting to watch how students will flag in one program, IXL, the general screener, right? Which has a very, a fine mesh, which is the goal. And then bringing in the second assessment, the Bridges, and doing that one and saying, oh, no, really? It's actually this or it's this piece of it. So it's been nice to have another diagnostic tool to, to help us with that decision making. Our second goal, math, 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 it's all math, professional development curriculum instruction. The implementation of the curriculum, again, Denny stole all my thunder there. And the second piece of that was to hire a full-time math coach, which we have Laura Halloran on board. And very appreciative being able to have someone full-time in each building, they're a great resource for each other. And the consultant that we hired is just amazing. So it's been a real solid launch. The third goal is the squishy goal, which is that communication and feel-good stuff. So obviously the implementation of Parent Square, you only said it three times. And this is, it's pretty magical. I did learn the other day that putting out a reminder in the morning about something happening later in the day is not useful to those of us who only get the digest at six o'clock at night. So learning point, so the reminder for half day now goes out the day before. Teachers are putting out beautiful newsletters. The part I love is I can see the whole school and they're just, the newsletters are clean and informative and hopefully easy to digest. And the nice thing is you're seeing your classrooms and, and then the school posts. So we're trying to get that refined. I was surprised when the alert came out today.
Making sure you're on your toes, Dr. Reindman.
I am, thank you. The second piece we've added, we're bringing back, they've been called principals chats, they've been called any number of things, but parent forums, chances for people to come into the building and talk with us about what's going on and answering questions. We are doing them in person. I know people love that remote piece, but it's just not the same. So the schedule is actually linked in, the online version of this. The next one technically is open house this week. And then Jim Carnes and Katie Kalachek, who's our school resource officer, are hosting a parent event for internet safety coming up. So there's something, at least one thing every month coming up. We'll see how those go. Had mixed luck with attendance with those. Our weekly family newsletters. So we have one week is very dense, lots of text newsletter, then we try to make the second one lighter and more event friendly, just knowing that you don't need to hear from us every Wednesday. But usually every Wednesday, there's something we think we need to have to tell you. So trying to balance those two. And then growing our connections with our council on aging. And this comes from our SAC committee and our SAC representative in Bob Cox, who's done an amazing job connecting our school and our seniors. So we're trying to find more opportunities for every fifth grade classroom to either attend a council on aging meeting or have the seniors come and have, have a snack with us or do an event and maybe some book clubs. Looking to build that and more service opportunities for our students. There it is. You have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Not a question, but a comment. Parent Square is so much better. It's so, I'm not missing anything. I felt like with Blooms I was missing things and that could have been user error, but it was also, it wasn't as clean and well-streamed as, I mean, Parent Square is wonderful. I see stuff from you, I see stuff from Ms. Parker, and it's all right there.
Yeah. It's really great. It's really nice, yeah.
Kudos to that.
It's a team effort.
It's a great change.
Right, I just checked the statistics. So Chicaring is up to sixty one percent parents using Parent Square, district-wide fifty five percent. So surprised the elementary level, there's a few more. That urgent alert was sent today, A, to make sure, because I haven't tried it yet, and it does override people's preferences and their digest. So you get it automatically in that moment via app, via text, via email and via phone. So we just wanted to make sure it worked before there was ever a real need to contact people in the moment. And I was also using it as an incentive for people who haven't signed up to Parent Square to think about it.
I worry about the people that we haven't connected that way.
Yeah, that's very well, I mean, that's not great, right? Sixty percent?
Sixty.
Sixty one.
Well, they're not missing out on things though.
They still get everything by email, they just have to go fishing for it in their inbox. That's their choice.
That's, yeah.
Or is it, or is it double count? Or it's hard not count enough if like two parents technically have their email on Aspen, but only one parent signed up? That might be fifty percent there. Like, I don't know how it's calculated.
Good question.
Like sixty percent might be ninety percent of families covered.
You should get the household level.
That's a good idea.
I'm sure they have it.
There will be help at Thursday night's open house for parents who just need a little boost in how to sign up for the app and download it. And then there was a request at the last school committee meeting, which we will certainly take care of, which is to send out some quick tutorials about how to change your settings and how to maneuver it so you're not getting things in six places if you don't want it.
One idea, if we're going to talk about it, I know this has come from SAC every year, is that the teachers love the engagement of the newsletters, that you can comment, you can like, you can post. But every year we talk about this, the teacher representatives at SAC say, it would be really nice if, if parents read it, if they acknowledged feedback and clicked like or commented, because they do put so much time and effort. Say, maybe something to say at the open house, that it could be a two-way street and that, you know, parents can comment, like. You know, I think it would boost the teachers' morale and make it feel like it was a worthwhile effort if they got a little bit of feedback both ways on Parent Square.
Thank you.
My iPhone today thought, it said potentially, or it might be Don Fatori.
Same.
We were actually in a meeting together when it went out and my phone said it was Cheryl Ingersoll, our former administrative assistant. Somebody else said Kate McCarthy, so I, I don't know how I would associate who's who with that phone number.
I don't remember.
I always loved Grace's phone when she was at Dover, her kids saw it come up for snow day and they're like, whoever this Don Fatorius, we'd love her.
Well, thank you very much for the update. Appreciate it. All right, and we're moving on to our consent items.
First, could you call for a motion to approve?
Oh, right. Can I have a motion to approve the school improvement plan? Do I have a second? All in favor?
Thank you.
Passes unanimously.
Keep up the good work, Dr. Reindman.
This is great.
All right, consent items, district and superintendent goals.
Right, so I presented them to you two weeks ago at our joint meeting. We should have taken a vote at that point and I forgot to ask. So unless there's any feedback, asking you to consider approving those as well as the technology responsible use agreement that Brandon Hall shared with you. Does Sherburne School Committee add one change to the responsible use policy, which I'd ask you to consider and vote as an amendment as well? There is a line in there that talks about, from the student perspective, I will tell my parent or teacher if I contact someone I don't know. We're changing it to I will ask a parent or teacher. So it's proactively asking permission and having that conversation before doing it and being an afterthought. So if you consider that same language when you vote for it, that would be helpful. And then your minutes from June fourth.
Okay. Do you have to do these all three separate?
No, you can do it all together as a package.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the consent items as a package with the amendment as the Sherburne School Committee proposed for the technology agreement?
Kate Cook, so moved.
Okay, do I have a second?
Jessie, hold a second.
All in favor? All right, passes unanimously. Okay, last bit here, we have informational items in the packet. So subcommittee assignments. So this is something that I'll resend around a Google Doc where people can put their, put their names in for roles. And if we end up with empty roles, I will collaboratively work with everybody to figure out who will get voluntold into that position. Since we do need, we do need to have all of them filled. Some of them are more active than others. So some of them in different years have the negotiation committee when we are doing the school. The teacher is a much bigger engagement than, I think this year, I don't think we have any collective agreements to do. So, but other ones, Jessie has been signing the warrants. She wants to continue to do that, can keep, keep your name there. Likewise, if there's something you are on that you don't want to do anymore, please raise that also, so.
So sorry, this, what we're seeing in the packet is what you're proposing?
No, this is, this is, this is just information there. I'll send around a Google sheet that has all the updated information. Because I don't think, there's nobody in in the warrants, so you're not, you're not there.
Oh, but there are other positions, there are some names.
This is what, this is just from last year's with the removal of people who are no longer here.
Got it, okay.
So like Liz isn't on here anymore.
Okay, may I ask, you typically have how many people per sort of?
Many of them are just one.
Okay.
But others are two.
Because I'm happy to fill in wherever needed.
Great, appreciate for all the empty blocks.
Yeah, absolutely, I'd be happy to do Macau and communication. But if there's anything else too that I can help someone with.
Great, yeah, so we can, we can finish that sort of like asynchronously to get everything off. That's great, thank you. Okay. So in the packet also, we have Sherburne School Committee minutes from April second. That's not right. Not April second.
May, maybe? It was the last approved, yeah, May.
And then the Dover Regional School Committee minutes from March twentieth. Okay, so our next meeting is October twenty second. Does anybody at the moment have agenda items they want to add for that meeting?
I will tell you, I'll be bringing forward your capital, your five-year capital plan. Needs to be approved and submitted to the capital committee by October fifteenth. But I always tell them you're going to hit it then, so you will see that. And also we'll have on the budget or on the agenda, an opportunity for school committee to suggest any budgetary goals that they'd like for us to incorporate into the fiscal year twenty six budget, given that you'll see that in November.
Okay.
So those are two things coming. And we'll do grants, a summary of grants, as I said.
Okay. And we have, I think you said this year is a school bus contract coming up?
Yeah, so we'll probably go out to bid in January for that, for the school transportation, yep.
Any other items that people want to talk about or follow up?
Is there any other like big topics on the horizon for this year? Just as we think about other topics that we want to bring to the table this year?
Standing ones, when we get the MCAS results, we usually get a report out on that.
But any, like, I mean, like, you know, last year we spent so much time on the math curriculum. Is there any other sort of?
The calendar change that was a big one.
The calendar change, yeah. Is there any sort of operational things that?
No, we'll just be looking at, taking a look at challenge access data, which primarily the data is coming from middle and high school students. But I think it's important for you to see how our current middle school, high school students are feeling and thinking about school and pressure on being a balanced student. And also within that is embedded data that we can look at, the effects of the change in start time. And so kind of closing that loop.
Is that on the docket for discussion this year, the school start times?
Well, that would be the will of the committee, it wouldn't be my suggestion to go backwards based on the data that we're seeing. But once you see the data, hopefully you'll feel the same way. But we'll be presenting that in January too.
Okay, because I don't know where this would come up on an agenda item or if it's in the buses, if we would consider the school start time to be the same for all schools. So elementary and middle and high school, so they all start later? I don't know where we bring that up or how that.
I think.
So it would be a budget conversation mainly.
You'd have to double your buses. We've had, we've had that conversation, I will say exhaustively when we were doing the school start time, looking at that. The issue is not only the financial, but being able to add additional nineteen drivers from an employment standpoint, that's still in the same spot we were when this, we were talking about this, like during the COVID era. So there is cost efficiencies, so having a bus driver do two runs versus someone coming and only doing one run and doubling that.
No, I totally get the budgetary impact. It's more, I'm imagining the data is going to say it has been positive for middle school and high school. I don't know if we've been doing a similar study or if there's been observations if at the elementary level, kids have been coming in more tired or anything of that nature that we should be worried about. So I hundred percent agree the later start time for middle and high school. I just don't know if we've done as thorough of analysis of the impact on the elementary.
Yeah, I think it is important to look into the effect. And I don't know how, what method would be the best way to look at it? Because they're younger and see, and some of them are now in middle school.
Right, but we can certainly show you the metrics that we've collected and if there's a desire for us to go and find more, we can, we can try. But, you know, I think it is difficult with, with smaller kids to get the same level of data, especially from them as individuals. And keep in mind that we had a pandemic right in the middle of the change in start time. So when you look at attendance, tardiness, behavior, social emotional well-being and grades, it's hard to tell what's affecting what.
Right.
Yeah, we lost a base. We lost our base year and we knew that, but yeah.
We're not looking for parent feedback.
No, no.
Yeah, and the spoiler is that our middle and high school students are getting more sleep. Which was the goal.
Which is a goal, and I do, I do just worry. I do just worry with the elementary level, especially the older elementary, now that I'm a parent of one of them, because their activities go just as late as middle and high school. Like soccer finishes at seven thirty, eight o'clock at night. They still are supposed to get, they actually still need just as much sleep as a middle school. So the early start is a challenge when buses start rolling at seven o'clock.
And a fifth grader is, might not be, kids are, have different development and a fifth grader might be similar to a sixth, it's not that different from a sixth grader.
Yeah, so yeah, if there's, if there's any data on the elementary that we can bring, I'm excited that it's working for middle and high school and definitely not proposing going back. But in, and understanding how much of a, is it? But in, and understanding how much of a, is it literally double the current transportation cost or worse than that, cause you have to pay overtime or extra, extra drivers to get them on?
You can certainly bring those numbers as well.
Okay. Thank you. And I, oh, one, one other just general update maybe to have, how is breakfast going overall in the school? Whether we can do an hour?
Good thinking.
Um, so we spent a, a lot of time worrying and getting ready and, um, didn't eat too. So, uh, breakfast is, um, available in the cafeteria, our kitchen staff has been amazing, um, in terms of getting us ready. So the idea is the day before you preorder, and that's not set in stone, but at least tells us are we making twenty or are we making two hundred? So they make all of the meals the night before, the kiddos come off the bus or come in from being dropped off, and if they're getting breakfast, they go into the cafeteria, pick up their lunch, excuse me, their breakfast, their drink, which is a juice or a milk, put in their PIN number and off to class they go. Um, the first day, I think we prepared almost three hundred breakfasts and now.
I bet.
Yeah, oh, yeah. Well, what was interesting is it was, um, roughly speaking, it's Monday, Wednesday, Friday are bagels, so it's a little mini bagel with a cream cheese, and then Tuesday was French toast and Thursday is waffles. And so I think the kiddos came in and they sort of expected like the hotel buffet breakfast. They came in, they just got the bag and it smelled like waffles because they're like, um, they're pre-seasoned, so there's no syrup, there's no cereal with milk, like they were really smart about the foods they picked. So the day we sampled, it was, um, a little plastic bag with waffles in it, some sliced apples and a juice. Was it right, is that typically it? Um, and so they go down to class, they have, from the time they arrive until just before eight o'clock to eat, um, teachers are on top of getting it done. Uh, we're seeing a lot more trash, cause there's a lot more wrappers in it. Um, and then I think about, uh, Tuesday, Thursdays, I think are more popular than Monday, Wednesday, Friday, and we're down to a hundred lunches a day we're making right now.
Yeah, the French toast sticks are.
Yeah. But they are when we do breakfast for lunch too.
Right.
They get syrup on those days.
Less syrup is better.
The, the thought process was to choose what would be the less messy, right?
Yeah.
In a class, and then there are requirements, you have to have a green, you have to have a fruit. Um, those are required to be, so we put together sort of the lunch bag that has everything that, or the breakfast bag, that has everything in it that's required on for, um, you know, to be served as a breakfast. And so it is a lot of extra work for our, um, kitchen staff, I will say, but doing the non-perishable, um, allows, like, if you do extras one day, it doesn't matter.
I'm curious.
So that, uh, they have stepped up to the plate immensely, we started, uh, in Chicaring Kitchen, short-staffed, um, we've been able to do some hires, someone came back to us, so, um, they were just as nervous, I think, because it was a, an unknown. And, um, you know, it's, it's really there for accessibility, right? So that everyone can have it if, if they need it and, um, but it's not a required. So it's, it's, hopefully it's, it's working and, you know, as we get a little bit more into it, we can probably change it up, but we recommend that they went as simple as